I will thank you everyone for being here this afternoon for the regular meeting of the City of South Fulton. Pardon us, we'll leave it there in the back. We're here and ready to go forward. At this time, Mr. Clerk, would you announce any decisions we made in the bigger section?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I do believe that you wish to authorize the city attorney to enter into a joint defense agreement with other government defendants. And I'm gonna, I don't see the attorney, but maybe one of you want to reference what that's regarding.
It was Rice versus Allen. Is the attorney?
It would be Anna Rice versus Southern County. We were trying parties today.
Okay, and I understand that we need to make that vote publicly out here?
Yes, I need to make an attestation motion.
I'll let it take a motion.
And this, this motion is to authorize the city attorney to enter into a joint defense agreement with other government defendants in the face of Anna Rice.
I would like to make a motion to authorize the city attorney to join with other governments in reference to litigation regarding Anna Rice.
Second. Probably move to second, did there a discussion? Hearing none, all goes in favor. That passes unanimously. Any other actions taken? Okay, hearing no others, I would intit- I would intitiate a motion to close the session.
I move to. I move to close the session, July 10, 2018, for personnel litigation and real estate.
Second. We probably moved to second, did there a discussion? Hearing none, all goes in favor. Okay, that's unanimous, Mr. Clerk, you can call the room.
And therefore your work session is now closed, and the Councilmember William Bill Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Martin Baker?
Present.
Councilmember Captain Ralph?
Present.
Councilmember Carmelita Dones via Skype.
Did she say present?
Present. Councilmember Helen Zee Willis?
Present.
Councilmember Naomi Gilier?
Here.
Councilmember Rosie Jackson?
Present.
And Councilmember Cleve?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, all members are present.
At this time, we have a chap move to do, to give a citation followed by a statement of cleave.
Let us stand. Let us pray. We come faithfully as we do every first, second, and fourth to, lifting up your name in our hearts, thanking you for all that you have done in the City of South Fulton. We thank you for our leadership, our mayor and our city council, and all our staffs, our departments. We ask you to allow your grace and your power to fall upon this place in our hearts, so that all that is said and all that is done will certainly be according to your will and your way. This we pray, let us all say, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that takes you to approval of the consent agenda. You do have three items, a meeting minutes from June 26th, a request for approval of SWAT purchase up to $52,000, and a resolution that is approving the community calendars for community development services that impacts both rezonings, use permits, and modifications.
Councilmember Cleve would like to amend that and one more item to the consent agenda.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the church anniversary proclamation for Pastor Albert Leeder for his still part of C and B.
Second. Probably move to second, any discussion? Hearing none?
Mr. Mayor, I will ask for the city attorney to advise, but I'm not certain that you can make changes to a consent agenda. We'll have to figure that. You want to pan it?
You can remove the item off the consent agenda.
You can add.
Yeah, you, you cannot add to a consent agenda, you would need to add to the regular agenda.
Okay, well, if we can add to the regular agenda, we can come back and move it still. Okay, okay, thank you very much. All right.
So I move that we approve consent agenda July 10, 2018.
We haven't got to the regular agenda yet.
No, I thought we moved consent.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted to get it, okay, go ahead.
I move that we approve consent agenda for July 10, 2018.
Second. Probably move to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all goes in favor? That passes unanimously. Mr. Clerk?
The next item is approval of the regular meeting agenda.
I make a motion that goes through the regular meeting agenda. Other people disagree.
I would like to make a motion that we amend the regular meeting agenda to include the proclamation for church anniversary of Core Parts C and B and Pastor Albert Leeder for his case.
Second. Probably move to second, any discussion? All those in favor? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Clerk? So, is this for, is the proclamation for presentation tonight?
No, it's not.
Okay.
No, it's not.
All right, so I was about to make the last.
No, it's not, it's not.
All right, so we are at the public comment portion of the meeting.
If we have any proclamation that we may, one of the personal privileges we want to make at this time. Councilmember Rouse, we'd like to acknowledge, do we have Corporal Anderson Flavon and Corporal Willis Reed?
When someone does something heroic and good, we don't have time to make proclamations all the time. We have to tell, talk about our hero when they do. And I just want the session.
You have a mic?
Here it comes.
It's coming.
Y'all call me Live Mop all the time. Hey.
Come on, Chief, come on, Chief. I gotta say, sometimes you don't have time to make formal recognition of people when you tell something good. And these two outstanding officers have really done something outstanding, and let me read to you what happened. On Monday, July 9th, Corporal Willis Reed, along with Corporal Anderson Flavon, successfully bore and attempted armed bank robbery at Citizens Trust Bank of Castiglial. Corporal Nicholas Williams and an unidentified amount of police officers held the perimeter during the armed robbery. There were no injuries, and the robber was successfully apprehended. This is the same robbery that has thrown the cash register from the wall model of Castiglial. So, I know sometimes people talk about police department and what we do and what we don't do, but we got to show a lot now of them sitting in that, the good things that they do. It may be small to some people, but it's a lot. You're wanting to stop a bank robbery, you're putting your life on the line, I hear you every day, and we need to make sure that people know that.
Community police.
Community police, thank you very much.
Corporal Reed and Corporal Flavon, I want to thank you for your bravery. I also want to commend our local police chief, she was so responsive and keeping me abreast of her. We had a very busy weekend in District 1, but I'm so proud of our police department, you do an awesome job, and thank you for your service.
I too want to commend you, I know that that really had to be both, and you showed really courage and restraint, you got the job done, and I am so proud of you and thankful that you're a part of our police department. Thank you.
See, I would have got me a big hug down there, if I hadn't known that was you, and I am so proud of you, all of you guys, thank you.
The other thing I want to tell you, at the time all of those there, they were doing a roadside checks, all right, taking photos, we didn't do any taking photos, but they were doing roadside checks, and the robbery for a long time, we want to thank you, all right, thank you all so much, appreciate you.
Right here, I mean? All of them, one, two, three, one more time, one, two, three.
Councilwoman Gunn, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I want to thank the county board for allowing me to take a picture under those three hours. And we're not letting that item on here. Councilwoman Gunn?
She's on mute, she's on mute.
They saying that you're on mute, mute, what is it, mute?
It's muted, can you hear? She can hear, but she can't, she gotta unmute herself.
Okay, hold that thought until you get your free call. All right. Okay, I'll come back to that. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, we have received seven speaker cards, if the first three speakers would approach the podium at this time, Mr. Michael Simpson, Mr. Marcus Cohen, and Mrs. Linda Collins.
Good evening. My name is Mike Simpson, we came here two years ago with the ATL gun, we had just renamed it, and we are here today, I think you all have some portfolios like this in front of you, if you will look at the book here, turn to page five, you will see something that we did for you guys at no charge, we put the City of South Fulton in, it's the first of nine cities listed in the book, and the next few pages after that. So, I was talking to Cleve, and we had talked about the fact that he really liked that position, and so I'm here today, if you look behind this whole thing right here, there's a little letter that has a quote on it, for a bid, it's the same price that we told you two and a half years ago, it's $1,000 a quarter, it's a two-year contract. We don't normally guarantee somebody gets the first right-hand page and give a discount too, but after talking with Bill and Cleve and Reed Mark, they convinced me that we need to step up to the plate and give you guys a discount. So, our next book comes out October 1st, October 2nd, so we do have, you know, a couple of weeks to get some things finalized, change some of the words, but I would like you to consider this, one of the other things that we do is, if you all have an item like a Christmas thing or events or stuff, we can add those to our calendar, number one, if you're a city that is in the book, and number two, if you all have something that you all get behind, where you want homepage or hat page at, redesign it, we will definitely put it on the website, but if we have space, this last magazine placed eight ads for free, so we will give you free space.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, this is not necessarily a good address, it's not my habit to always come here and seem like I'm in attack mode, I know I get a bad label with that sometimes. Last session, I left this building where I got my license at 16, fire hot, upset, being in this seat at 6:55, and I see today that my problem is rectified because the speaker cards, it was going around all the way up to 7 o'clock, but I didn't have it last session, and I sit here and I notice that the time went by, I had a lot that I needed to say, I wanted to get an update from the city manager on what has never been made public, and this wasn't really supposed to be made public yet, but a great function collabing with the South Fulton Police Department on a softball game, a unity game, that SOS wanted to spark, and members of your office, Mr. City Manager, were there, and told me that, you know, it was a good idea, wanted to be more collaborative, or haven't heard any update on that. But back to the last week, you know, going to try to get a speaker card and being denied after saying the amount of work that I've done, that being here all the time, but after saying the amount of work that I've done in the country, but on behalf of my city, after being a resident for 44 years, please take my card and at least ask your boss, and wouldn't even accept my card, so for clarity, and the chaplain was right there, he was visible, again, I get a bad rap sometimes when I'm confrontational, I said, so for clarity, I'm not allowed to speak, said no, I walked out of this building. You know, that's been part of the problem, and I know you all give me time to speak, so I appreciate it, that's been part of the problem. You know, Mr. Mayor, I'm just straight to straight to me, man, I've had, you know, we've got a lot of deaths of young folks here in this city, and I've always been one of the many that have been, one of the few that have been speaking about own our blackness, accept our blackness, knowing that we govern all races, but infrastructure is great, economic development is great, but, I mean, we got a rare opportunity to really help save lives, the women that are in the criminal justice division here have made history, I've always said that the eyes of the country are on this city, we can make history, we talk so bad about the youth, but, you know, an idea I would like to throw out here would be, why not a task force to utilize the organizations that are truly on the ground, why not, why isn't there monies in the budget directed to saving our youth? And last point, personality conflict should not stop us from our main objective, which is to uplift our community. I've had project after project after project that this city has not gotten behind, there have been certainly individuals that have. We've had brick bread targeting gangs, some of you reached out and went out of the city, others, I heard say that because of the people at the club, would definitely support the next one, the next one was dealing with sex trafficking, nobody from the city. SOS's annual legal clinic that saves hundreds of time and money for people, I even contacted the solicitor's office, South Fulton didn't even send representation to this legal clinic that's been going on for years with several firms, firms of stats in this city, it's apparent to me that there is, with this administration, there is a lack of willingness to collab, maybe it's because I'm deemed like I'm anti-police, which I am not, I'm anti-that policing, so I just came here today to let the facts be known, Mr. Mayor, the pseudo-meetings, the pseudo-handshakes, the pseudo-smiles, some of you are merely warming that chair until we get a true collaboration and truly want to uplift this city, all powers, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Followed by Ms. Linda Collins with Ms. Sandra Rogers and Ms. Myrna Bolden, also please approach Ms. Collins.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, District 5, Linda Collins. I would like to thank the mayor and council for the events held on behalf of the citizens for the city, educational and entertainment, and the walk was great, it was hot, we ate bananas and we drank water, but no one fell out. However, I have concerns regarding the developers who submit their paperwork to the council for review at the time the developer is in the process of making their presentation to the council. What is the policy and procedure for this process? And so, how many days does the council have to review the request prior to the item being placed on the calendar? We certainly hope the mayor and the city council will uphold the best interest of the citizens and embrace the environmental safety and environmental justice for our health and benefits. The need to develop our business area, we look forward to doing that with quality as opposed to quantity in the city. And what is the procedure for putting new furniture in the parks once the park has been renovated? Do you have a policy and procedure to this process? And if so, has it been presented to the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council, thank you for giving me this opportunity to come before you, I have a couple of concerns that I would like to bring to you this evening. One of them is the situation with the rezoning, and I know that there is, there's been some other discussion about that, I'm talking about the quick trip for Buffington and Flat Jones, and it's my understanding that now they are suing us, and so my question is, I remember Mayor Edwards that you said at the end of the meeting, you kind of, it seemed to me as if you were letting them know, well, you know, you guys didn't get the vote, but you know you can sue us. That made me kind of question, are you, were you with us on that? Your council had voted for it to be declined, the rezoning to be declined, you had heard from residents who said they didn't want it, especially the residents in District 5, which, I'm sorry, that's where I'm from, District 5, Rosie Jackson, and so I have some real concerns about that, and I would really like to feel that you're loyal and you're with us on that. Okay, and the other concern, another concern is the trucks, y'all know every time I come, I talk about the trucks, because I live on Fairwood and my house shakes, they still fly up and down the street, what are we doing about it? I had asked this question, and you said that we should be able to go on the website and find answers to questions and concerns that we brought up, I have looked on that website, I have not seen any answers. So, if, I mean, if you could kind of make it visible on the homepage, you know, public comment discussions at council meeting or something like that, so we can know how we can answer those questions, how we can, I mean, access the answers to those questions. Okay, the last but not least, crime, almost nightly now in District 5, I'm hearing gunshots, is ridiculous, and not just pop, 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 but boom, 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 and, and I promise you, if you think, and anybody in here thinks that it's not affecting you personally, because you don't have it in your neighborhood, trust me, crime is malignant, if you don't have it now, it will be visiting you soon. So, we need to put an end to that, and I applaud our police department, and I understand the value and how important our police department is, because I call them all the time, every time I hear gunshots, but we need more police visibility, we do whatever it takes in the budget to get more and more and more police and pile as many as you can in District 5, thank you very much.
Followed by Ms. Myrna Bolden, Mr. Jeffrey Vanau, and Ms. Juliette Rankin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council, my name is Myrna Bolden, I am resident of District 1. I have a concern, I really need clarification, on how to make a police report, a police report regarding fraud. I have been into the precinct, the precinct of Fulton Industrial twice to try to make such a report, I have waited many times for an hour and a half or two, and to be told that a detective is not available to take my report, I asked, they'd have to get a detective to take the report. I did have some word and evidence that I had printed out, so I needed someone to actually see the evidence, so I could not get the report over the phone. I was told to go home, and they would have someone to call me and let me know when I could meet a detective there, that never happened. So what am I doing wrong? That's my question.
Good evening, Mayor and council, Reverend Jeffrey Vanau, president of the Cape Henry chapter of the National Action Network, resident of Lakes of City Grove. The City of South Fulton is a new city, so I imagine there's some new changes that could be made, let's talk about changes. Changes in taxes, since I moved to South Fulton and I applied for this thing called homestead exemption, they told me that I applied after the cutoff date, that they can still collect taxes. Oh, I can't get the exemption, but you can still collect taxes, how does that work and who does that? The change needs to be that if I'm paying taxes here, I should be able to get the exemption too, if I bought property here, but they have a cutoff date, and so if you don't apply for homestead exemption up to this particular date, you can't apply for, but if you didn't buy in the community at that particular time, but you bought later on, you still should be able to do a, collect homestead exemption, because you just bought property. Now, maybe this was a Fulton County policy, but I would ask that the City of South Fulton redo that, because you shouldn't be able to hold somebody captive to pay taxes on a piece of property that you can't exempt from as a homestead exemption, and so that's one of the things that I'm dealing with right now, and of course, we just knocked out our tax deals out, you know, I had to call my mortgage company and call the City of South Fulton in order to get my homestead exemption, in order to line them up with getting my tax exemption, and it still hasn't been done, so they think I'm gonna pay the mortgage next month, which is though I'm not. You see, as a taxpayer, I know my tax rights as well, and if you're not gonna get me in line of what I owe you, you're not gonna get anything, and we're gonna deal with this face to face, and so I would say to the City of South Fulton, we have a responsibility to those who move into South Fulton, because we are that city that we want people to come to, and they should be able to get the tax breaks as they are paying their taxable portion, and if we don't do that, we're creating a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Juliette Rankin, District 4, and I wanted to talk about what I saw during the work session, I wasn't very pleased, I want to talk about a few things, but I did sit in there because it was not pleasing to me at all, and I just wanted to say, guys, we see you, okay, some people act like we don't see you, we see you, we're sitting here and we're looking at what you're doing and saying, and today that is, you know, it wasn't professional at all, some of you guys are on the wrong side of history, you've heard this before, we keep telling you, you're not going along with the wishes of the people, it's a new day and it's a new time, and some people don't get that, it was some elected officials who didn't get that in 2016, you see what happened. Don't go against what the people want, we keep telling you and you keep, you're not in the 21st century, and we keep telling you that you're not. I just want to say to Ms. Rosie Jackson, we love you, keep fighting for us, Councilman Cleve, we love you, keep fighting for us, these people are fighting for us, some people up here, sitting up here, voting the wrong way, we see you. Some people up here, sitting up here, voting the wrong way, we see you. You vote against the vote of education, we sell you. You vote against decriminalizing marijuana, we sell you. You vote against, or you vote for, a truck stop for QT, we sell you. We see your votes. What are you thinking? That's against the people. You have a proclamation for elected officials right before it's time for them to be elected and give them T-shirts, we sell you. Inappropriate. Please, we see you. It's not no people here. I tell all the people I can. Work for the people of South Fulton. That's why you're here. Not to be elected in the future. You might be elected, you may not. But you're here for us. Please work for us. A few things before our time runs out, and other things. Manager Donald, I just want to say to you, the warehouses in Union City are a part of South Fulton. Union City sits inside of South Fulton. It's not a regional affair. It's a part of our city.
Thank you very much. No further speaker. Okay. It's Adam Springer. Oh, I'm sorry. Wait a minute. So, you have to have Mr. Carter, Ms. Metz.
I do understand that, sir. But my question is, is, and I understand Robert's move to work, but I-
And here you go to the mic.
I have been all over the South Fulton website. And I went into the office to get documentation on when this meeting was held. I didn't see on the website, nor did anyone say that you have to be here to fill out a cards. So, if that is in fact the procedure, it needs to be publicized much better than it is. Okay? That's not listed. I didn't. I'm overlooking it.
Okay, well, ma'am, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to let you come up and say what you got to say and give you a tour.
Thanks.
Come on. Ms. Metz.
Thank you. My name is Tracy Stewart. I'm in District One. My concern is about the increase in property taxes. I'll be brief. All over social media, I'm seeing information about how people on this board are requesting assistance or judges are requesting increases in pay. What I'm requesting is factual information that's transparent to the people that live here. It's not on the website. It's not publicized. What are the specific roles and responsibilities of the people sitting on this board? If you are in fact requesting assistance, what, how are, how are their responsibilities different than yours? What are they being paid? What are you being paid? What is everybody in this district being paid? Our property tax increases are outrageous. And I can't see where, as a new city, we can afford it or what we're getting for it. There needs to be a lot more transparency. I don't understand whether or not, if in fact you're requesting assistance, what is that for? What are they doing? If judges are asking for pay raises, why would that even be considered in a new city? Please give us a lot more transparency. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Marie Haymark Robinson. Thank you for putting me on the list. My name is Marie Robinson Metz. And I'm the District Fifty-Five State Representative. The only thing I could say to you is, join the crowd. Because they have been complaining about me, especially in South Fulton. So, I had an opportunity to talk with a group the other day, and I said to the group, "You have to walk a mile in my shoes. Let me explain." I represent fifty-five thousand individuals and still counting. I'm still counting because my district overlaps District One. And I'm afraid to ask how many people in District One. So, I already have fifty-five thousand, right? And they are complaining about me because they said, "We don't see you in South Fulton." I said, "Hold on just a little while. You're going to get tired of seeing Marie Metz." So, I've been there for what, three legislative session? And as my husband told me, he said, "Marie, I know you." Well, I want you to do is to go there and close your mouth and just watch, and you can learn. And that's what I did. But three legislative session, so I'm putting everybody on notice. Come January twenty nineteen, you're going to hear from what, Marie Metz. I've already told the Speaker of the House and everybody down there. My husband said, "You better watch out." But on a more serious note, I have a gift for each one of you. Some of you probably already have it. It's this history of racial injustice. That's a big issue that we are dealing with right now. Someone was trying to bring it up, I think, last legislative session. And the Speaker said, "I don't even want to hear that." But I think it's going to come up again. It's going to come up again. So, I have a gift for you, for everyone up here and af- after the mi- oh, sure. And thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. And as I said, you will be seeing Marie Metz. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Yes, Reverend. Mr. Mayor and Members of Council, that takes you to Page Two of today's agenda under Resolutions. First Resolution, since Resolution Two Thousand Eighteen dash zero forty-two, a resolution to amend the contract for the Chief Judge and authorizing the City Manager to execute the amended contract and for other lawful purposes.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty Eighteen Zero Forty, Forty-two to amend the Chief Judge's contract to City Manager's to execute a set agreement.
Second? Okay, we'll discuss it.
Discussion?
Discussion.
What can I ask the- The agreement? I guess the City Manager's what?
Who writes the agreements?
Did the city?
No, I, I did not write this agreement. So, Judge Sellers initially sent me a copy of, a version of this agreement before the last meeting. But I've looked at this copy since the last meeting. It is substantially similar to the version that she sent me prior. And I have sent a review of it in its entirety. But no, to answer your question, I did not draft it.
So, I just have some questions, and I guess, do I need to direct it to you?
Well, if it's about the agreement you directed to the judge-
I drafted it. Okay. And I guess what I'm saying, the professional, I, I have just several things because like in line out of Section Seven, no, Section Six in B, it says, "As determined by City Council and its discretion." But that's in B, but we're not seeing that in A. And I think that we need to see that because basically it's saying, we are approving a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, but then we're saying, Section Five, we're paying for professional dues. And I think that needs to be dealing with for the Chief Judge. Anything that, where you're doing the judge's responsibilities.
And, and that's correct. This, actually, this agreement is actually the exact same agreement as what was previously presented and signed. The only change that was made to the agreement was as it relates to pay. So, this is, it says amended agreement because in my current contract, the other, all of the provisions are the exact same with the exception of the payment and the terms of the payment. All of the other sections are the same. So, I didn't amend any, I didn't change any of that language that was previously in the contract.
Okay, so can we do this then because we did increase to one thirty-five on the salary? And I guess I'm asking, can we change the professional dues where it would reflect whatever her responsibilities are for the judge? But whereas she has, by the City Council and its discretion, I would like to list that at each thing because we're looking at that piece for professional dues. And then it comes saying, "A city agrees to the budget and pay the travel and subsistence expenses of the Chief Judge for professional and official travel." It's not, it's just like an open book. And it's not telling us, okay? In other words, I guess we need to, I want to see where these things are. Versus just saying, it's just open, you know, you go wherever and we pay. And I'm not trying to be funny, but like I said, we're, we're talking now. Everybody's talking about money. So, we need to get it down to a point. We can't do a, a blank check.
I mean, and respectfully, Councilwoman Jackson, it's not, it's not a blank check. And I think that per the last agreement, Councilwoman Raul, if I'm not mistaken, specifically mentioned that. And during that time, the discussion was that you pay bar dues because you need that to be a lawyer or be a judge.
A lawyer, not a judge.
Oh, you, you need to, you need to be a bar-
No, 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 but the lawyer, but she's got, in other words, in our charter, she's two points, one six, she has to keep, basically, in order to keep the position of judge. She has to keep those, you know, whatever qualifications she needs. So, that's something she would have to do to keep the job as a judge. She would have to keep her law, in other words, pay her law, like her law fees in that, herself, to keep that job.
You still have the floor, Ms. Jackson.
I, I, I'm, I'm-
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm just asking a question. And basically, in other words, if, I'm not an attorney, but if I was an attorney, in order for me to keep the job as a judge, I have to remain an attorney. So, that means that I have to pay for those licenses. If we, if there's a judge fee, I have no problem paying that. But to pay your license for, to be, to remain an attorney every year, I don't see paying that.
Okay, we can, I mean-
Yeah, I think we can fix that. If it's okay, for Section Five, I can just put it in that section where it talks about professional dues, I can add languages maybe improved by the council on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, and then if we look at Section Nine? Okay, you come on.
So, I think that a big part of when we look at the budget and we look at the quality of staff and things that we have, we want to make it easy to ensure that if we have a high quality of professional and certain professional dues, whether it be conference maintaining, key certifications that actually help the city, I, I believe that those would be reasonable cost. But within the budget, when we present the budget to you, you could cap those for the department. And so, let's say, I'll just say it's five thousand dollars for the department. I don't know what lawyer dues are, any of that stuff. But those dues for that department could not exceed that amount. And then that would allow the council to remain fiscally responsible, but allow the required certifications that staff members need. So, let's say if you got Economic Development Administrator, while they have to maintain their certification, you want them to have it as an Economic Development Practitioner for your city. And so, taking on those fees is not unreasonable or abnormal. But I think what I'm hearing from the council, you and others, is that you don't want to have just an open book on paying for all of these random conferences or all of these random certifications. So, my recommendation would be to allow those to be allowable cost. But when you look at the budget, if those department numbers for professional development fees or whatever it is, is absorbent, you could limit those. And then it gives us options as administrators to say, let's say her bar fees were sixty-five hundred, but the department only had a five thousand dollar budget for it. That would mean that the judge would have to cover the debt. Do you follow what I'm saying there? I think that might-
So, basically, when we, with the increase of the one thirty-five, how much are all of these dues? In other words, base, her salary is actually going to be more than one thirty-five because what I'm looking at, we say civil club, and, and I guess all I'm asking is, can we just, like, at each, at the end of every paragraph, as you said earlier, if we can just say, "By the City Council and its discretion." Because basically, that's a, that's a blank check. That I'm saying you can go travel wherever you want to go. You can go wherever you want to go and, and, and we're going to pay for it because that's what Section Six Professional Development is saying. That she could, the official travel other than daily commuting, meetings, occasions adequate to continued professional development. I mean, it's just an open book.
And while I don't think that's negative, what, what my recommendation would be, I would, if you made an adjustment, it would say, "Within the council-approved budget." And then that way, it's, you don't have to bring back each due back to you. You would address it during the budget process. And so, whatever is budgeted, that is where-
Well, then we need to go back and change on Page, Section Two, the term. Because what it's saying is, the agreement shall continue through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And basically, that would be in conflict with Section Nine because I think when we did meet, we stated that this would go to our budget time because we would have an opportunity to review this and come back. But last, last meeting, when you said that we had an opportunity to change in the orders, do you recall that?
And you can't, I think that's, that's the point that I'm making is that you can change in order to-
No, no, let's look at Section Nine. Just look at Section Nine.
And I hear a council member, I think, so I think we're saying the exact same thing. What I'm saying is, is that in the agreement, you would put "as approved budget." So, that means that in the FY nineteen budget, whatever's approved for professional dues, that's, it doesn't, it is separate and, and outside of the contract because you have to approve the budget every year.
Exactly.
This year, let's say there are five people on her staff, but next year, there may be seven. Regardless, what you pass in that budget means that the dues could not exceed that. And so, if you adjust it to the budget, then you have control of it each time.
Okay, let me finish. Let me, let me put here. Section Nine says, "Other terms and conditions." It says, "The City Councilman consultation with the Chief Judge shall fix any such other terms and conditions of her continued service as Chief Judge, as it may determine from time to time related to the performance of the Chief Judge, provided such terms and conditions are not inconsistent with or in conflict with the provisions of the agreement, the City Charter, or any of the law." So, what I would see taking out is the agreement and leave it saying, "The City Charter or any of the law." Because basically, what this is saying to me, and I am not an attorney, but what it's saying to me is, if we make any changes in this, that we, in other words, if we want to say anything or make a change, it cannot conflict with this agreement that's presented before us today.
If I may, I, I would respectfully disagree. That's a, that's kind of what we consider to be our several, several, I always say that word wrong.
Several ability calls.
Thank you. Where basically, this agreement can't conflict with law. So, if, if you guys pass an ordinance and charter, the charter changes if there's a new state law, this agreement is sub, this agreement cannot conflict with that.
Okay, well, can we just take out a agreement?
Madam City Attorney?
I want to take an agreement and just say, "The City Charter."
I think what Councilwoman Jackson is saying is that it says now that whatever change you guys do, whatever change you do in the future, it won't be in conflict with this agreement or charter and the law. And I think what Councilwoman Jackson is saying, the change just won't be in conflict with charter or law, but it can be in conflict with this agreement. And that would be, for example, if you change the salary. Because if you do change the salary, it is going to become in conflict with this agreement. So, she's saying to take out the provision that says you cannot change this in conflict with the agreement.
So, the way that I understand the interpretation of the ordinance, the ordinance, according to the charter, the charter says that you have to set the salary in the ordinance. So, the ordinance, if I'm, if I'm just kind of going, doing a little law school teaching, the ordinance is up here, the agreement is down here. So, if you change the salary, you'd have to put the agreement to the side. You've got to change the ordinance. Because the ordinance, according to the charter, which is the state law, the ordinance says you have to adjust compensation in the ordinance or you have to fix compensation in the ordinance. So, if you fix the compensation in the ordinance, then the agreement would be out of conflict with the ordinance, which would then mean that the agreement would be void per this clause.
Okay, so, but you, we should have no problem with taking out this agreement. I mean, just for me, because like I said, not just for me, but I just, I, I just can't see that.
Because to permit the agreement, to take out the word agreement in Section Nine.
Okay, Ms. Turner, I'm going to come back to the index. Ms. Gil, you're up. You did the draw. Let's talk to them.
I want to go back to a couple of words. I want to go back to-
Stay near.
I'm sorry, my, 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 it's not. I want to go back to a couple of words. I want to go back to certifications, licenses, and fees. So, if we pay for the license for the judge, then we need to pay for the CPA licenses. We need to pay for- We need to pay for the licenses that everybody has, because we cannot do it for one. We would have to really do it for everyone. Wait a minute, I'm not finished. Then there is the, um, certification. So, we take classes, and we have to pay for the classes that we take, and, you know, certification. So I can understand the certifications, I can understand the fees that we pay to take, uh, to go to, uh, a meeting, or whatever. So I think the, the big thing here, and the difference, is the license.
Can I, can I address that? I will, the bar license is three hundred and fifty dollars. I'm, I'm not going to argue about three hundred and fifty. We can remove that provision from the contract. I will pay my Georgia part. It's three hundred and, we're not talking about sixty-five hundred dollars.
Only, only, yeah, only because I just want to, want to make it fair. And if we do it for one staff person, or one councilperson, or whoever, then we should do it for everybody. That's all I'm saying.
I guess my only point of that is that we, all you're doing is making it an allowable cost. Making items an allowable cost doesn't mean you actually pay for them. And so, what I would, what I would be asking the council for, and so this, in my agreement, I'm not wed to it or not, you know, but what I would say is, is that, once the budget is set, and you have a certain amount of money that is allowable for licenses, professional development, certifications, what, classes, conferences, they're all in the same bucket. And so, having it as allow, an allowable cost, then allows the different staff leaders to determine how they distribute that across their, their, uh, their departments. Now, not even taking it away from, uh, the judge, if it were, let's say, policing, and we had something like that where we did college reimbursement, I've heard some of you guys talk about the importance of having educated police officers. This allows you to be able to make that type of investment within budget. So I, I think you're thinking about it the right way, in that, yes, you want it to be accessible for everybody, but then by you making it allowable, it puts the onus on the department here to figure out how to distribute it. And that would be my only pushback there, is that I think we should look at it as more of a positive, that if you make it allowable, you then shift the responsibility to others to make sure everyone has the credentials and things necessary to have a running function in the city. Understood, yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Raul.
I think I raised this before, um. I think we kind of talked about this kind of out of context. I know when we first had this conversation, we had in front of us what was budgeted overall for the department, so we could kind of see it next to each other, um, compensation versus, which was earmarked for, you know, um, you know, general contract services, but, um, if possible, can somebody bring that up, just for the benefit of the public? And secondly, um, I think I am generally, okay, my question was more about section, would be about section ten. Well, again, um, clarification on would be the civil, civil club. Civil organizations.
I'm not, I'm not joining a single civic organization with the city of South Fulton. Any, all of my civic organizations are paid out of my pocket.
But it's saying in here, so.
Ms. Ms. Ms.
I mean, you can, you can check.
I mean, I, I just want a clarification on what that is. And again, I, I hope, I want to figure to what we can decide, so I think we're just trying to get to the language that everybody can live with.
But I do, I do think that that meant like, um, South, what is, what is it, the South Fulton? There's like some South Fulton groups that may have, yeah, that may want me to join that, that's a civic group. That's not a bar group, so judge groups are, judge groups would be different.
There you go.
Like the Georgia Council of Municipal Court judges.
Anything judge.
And I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that, because everybody deals with professional organizations. So my issue is not with five, I'm more concerned with section ten. So I, I, I think we could figure that out, I mean. And maybe is it possible under section nine, or in, in I agree with you, the law, we have to pass a budget. So that's a ordinance, so that is a law, as you clearly said, section eight-nine, but can you put some reference to the budget in there that I think that gets us where we need to be? Is that amenable to me?
Oh, Jewish, please ask your question.
Yeah, I, I guess.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Willis?
Uh, I'm in agreement with, with the city manager, and we all gave, somebody gave the comment that we should give respect due to, um, positions. And the city manager recommended that we look to giving her a budget, and then she working within her budget. Um, you know, to pick and choose what she can pay for, what certifications, and what licenses she can play, pay for. In my opinion, I think that's case all professional development. For me, I want the most qualified person, um, working for my city as possible. And if I can help, and if I can promote professional development, that's what I'm going to do. We can't say that, you know, we don't make police officers pay for their post-certification. We don't make, they have to have forty hours of training every week, every year. We don't, we can choose what licenses they have, certain things that they have to, in their profession, they have to get a license for. So we don't pick and choose what they can get a license for. We don't pick and choose what they get certifications for. So I don't, I think it's unfair for us to, to choose what our judge, who has just been nationally recognized, to, uh, have to use her budget to pay for as far as certification and licenses. I think we should give her a budget, and whatever she can pay for out of that budget, that's what she pays for, and then we deal with it. We are a part of professional organizations that the city paid for. Well, if, if you don't, if you, you have the opportunity to be a part of professional organizations.
Thank you, Mr. Cleary.
Yeah, I, I want to say. I just want to say I'm okay with, uh, with the civil club, because it says in South Fulton. Uh, that, that makes sense to me. Uh, the other thing I think we're missing is, you know, we had a conversation, and we're not supposed to divulge anything from our session, but I just think that what the city manager says is clear. With this budget year still, you know, we give them a, you know, like, we still have another budget to deal with it in the next couple of months as well, so I think all of our colleagues should take that into consideration.
Okay, uh, let me just say this, I agree with you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Baker, and I agree with you, man. As I was listening to the conversation, uh, Madam Attorney, I can only go back in my mind and think about our own budgets. Because our own budgets are set up just like that. Outside of payroll, in your budget, each one of you sitting here, outside of payroll, you can move money around based on the line item. And most of us have had, at that, at that dozen. All right? I'm not saying, I'm just saying, but I'm hearing what he's saying. He's saying you give your budget, and you do, you know, what you make, as long as it's legal and ain't bad business. All right? What I'm saying to you is just be very careful about our conversations, that it can flow back to you. And the way that we do our budgets, I mean, we got people up here that's, that's paid dues to organizations, that we clearly know that they're enhances their professional organizations, nobody ever questions them, you know? Uh, but that's the thing you should do. So I agree with the manager, I agree with Mr. Baker, you know, she knows what to do with her, the judge ain't going to jail. So I'm telling, I'm telling you, if she do, that'd be a bad deal. But I'm telling you, I give enough confidence in her, who brings in thousands and thousands of dollars every week in the city, all of us can count it for, that she is mature enough, as we are mature enough, to handle her budget. So I agree with you, Mr. Manager, I agree with you, Mr. Baker. Is that it? It's emotional, the floor.
I'm sorry.
Uh, what, there was, what, what changes were we going to be?
Well, you, you would need to, to do, move to make that amendment. And there were no motions to make the amendment. I think Councilwoman Jackson spoke about amending to remove the word agreement from section nine, but that you would need to make a form of motion to do that.
Form a motion to?
Yeah, because I moved the, uh, friendly amendment, and then, um, you're written to remove the word agreement for section nine. And that would make the, this section say that future modifications can't be in existence, such as the city charter or other law.
Okay. Can I go with just what you just said?
You may. Did you give that?
That doesn't change.
Yeah, it just taken the agreement, in other words, so we can change. Basically, the city charter, we can't do anything as far as the city charter, but we can make some changes, basically what we had talked about before.
And if I could tag on one additional change to your motion, if you, if you would permit me, um, and that would be to section eight where it says bonding, I would like to amend that sentence that says that the city shall bear the full cost of fidelity to other bond required of the judge under any lawful ordinance. I would like to include at the end of the end of that sentence, in the lawful performance of her duties, of her duties and her capacity as chief judge. Just clarifying, is came the bonds, what was that to?
Oh, can I get the full amendment?
Do you have that?
Yes.
Mark to gather, I don't know. Would you read it?
Looks like, um, Councilmember Jackson's amendment would be to remove agreement from section nine. And then, in section eight, which is right above it, title bonding, she's adding a few words in the lawful performance of her duties as judge.
In her official capacity.
And that changed.
I'm sorry, can you repeat, repeat that last portion, please, so I can write that part right there?
In the lawful performance of her duties, in her official capacity as chief judge.
Do we have it now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It was seconded, it's seconded. Probably moved to second, any further discussion? Let's vote. That has been passed. Now do this, we have votes.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we strike section ten relative to civil club.
Say second.
Excuse me, say it again?
Section ten, civil club.
Right, section ten, civil club. Okay, that does the last second. Can I get a, uh, can I get a motion on the?
So your main motion.
The main motion?
Was made by Councilmember Raul, seconded by Councilmember Willis, to approve now, would be as amended.
That's right.
Who was, who made the motion?
Raul Willis.
Raul.
Yes, that was the original motion to approve, that's right.
Okay. That was, that was a motion amended, seconded, that would be amended.
Oh, including the amended.
And so you're back to the main motion.
All right. You voted for the main motion, that's all.
All those are favored? That passes. That is.
The next item is a resolution sponsored by Mayor Edwards, Resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero forty-three, resolution to appoint the Honorable Michael L. Sheridan as the pro temp judge for the city of South Fulton Municipal Court, and for other lawful purposes.
Uh, we have, I sent out the resolution of, uh, okay, anybody else not get?
Yeah. Mayor, I move, I move to, um, approve resolution to appoint pro temp judge, Michael L. Sheridan, um, resolution two thousand eighteen zero four three.
Probably moved to second, is there any discussion?
Hearing that, oh, sorry, not discussion. It, it, it sounds like some people didn't get the resolution. We've had, we've had email issues, so I'm just.
Yeah, okay, well, I, I really don't know what to say. I know I made sure that it was sent out.
No, I got it, because I, I just, I just heard some people say I didn't get it.
There was one person, I'm sorry, she didn't get it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'll just check.
All right, all those are favored? That passes. Mike, stand up. That's, that's another South Fulton board.
Yes, thank you, I'm honored and humbled. I am a raised South Fulton, uh, district, believe it's district three, in between Fairway Road and Butler on Thaxton. And I love South Fulton, I can't wait to serve. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, can't wait to serve the citizens.
Grab, ready, get ready.
Okay, the next section of ordinances, the first item is co-sponsored by Councilmembers Raul, Jackson, and Willis under ordinance two thousand eighteen dash zero twenty-eight. I did pass out, um, a inter-office memorandum submitted by the city manager. This is for first reading and ordinance amended, title six, health and sanitation of the city code of ordinances to address nuisance properties, protect neighboring property values, and encourage economic development and for other lawful purposes.
I'm entertaining motion. Is that first read, is the first read, then I won't entertain a motion. Let me get the hand, Ms. Cleary, Ms. Jackson.
I'm okay, I'm getting nice up today.
I won't wait until everybody.
All right, Raul, then Ms. Jackson? And then, Ms. Willis?
No, wait, I don't wait.
Well, she's giving me the, just a link.
I'm waiting.
Okay, all right, next, Ms. Cleary. Ms. Raul, go ahead.
So, um, I, I thank you for the memo that came out, but I'm, I'm just trying to understand, um, our, our process again. Um, before it was on the agenda, was this vetted by the department, because I thought we had sent this?
So I think that it was sent, but I don't think they had enough time to respond to these responses, since it was the first read. We included this for any consideration, so that if you want to make amendments or adjust it, you'll have a couple of more weeks to look at it again.
Okay, um, I, I would like to see when it comes back for the second read incorporated in a document, so it's clear. I mean, when I read it, I don't see anything troubling about it, but it would be nice for it to be in the next version at our next meeting.
So, I follow, real quick, Councilmember, are you saying if there are the actual tangible edits to the resolution, you would want to see those in?
That's what she's saying.
Yes.
Well, I mean, they have some recommendations, and I'm going to defer to the expertise of our staff, so I, I do want to hear your input. It'd be just nice to see it embedded in the document. And, and, um, any physical impact relative to this.
Okay, uh, that being Ms. Jackson?
Section six, um, it, uh, says in addition to the foregoing fines upon conviction, the city shall discontinue the public water supply service. Uh, I guess my question is, we're Atlanta city, so how is, how, I mean, how, how would this be done? Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's all we could, you could have to have a, a new government agreement for him on you.
For them to turn after, um, turn it off. So what do we need to do?
I don't know, because we know yet, which said, which part of section?
Oh, I'm sorry, section six, three zero zero four, it says fines and enforcement.
Can you do a line number, how many have it?
Uh, one eighty-four, I'm sorry. Is it wrong? Yeah.
So, Ms. Jackson, let me hear your objection, your, your comment on that meeting.
Well, it's, it, there's a, it states that, like, for fines, in other words, it starts like a hundred dollars each day, and if it gets any further than, uh, the foregoing fines upon conviction, the city shall discontinue the public water supply service at any price. So, we don't have water. I, you know what I'm saying, we don't supply the water, so my question is, how, you know, we're sitting in Atlanta, so how do we do that? Is it an IGA or what, what are we gonna do?
You can, you can do that for a MOU, but it would still just be subject to a man that agreed to do it.
Right.
Subject to them wanting?
Well, they've agreed to do it because we can't force Atlanta to do anything by ordinance. So we would, uh, we'd be able to communicate and negotiate and say, what do we have in place? Can you assist us in enforcing? And it would be subject to their, uh, with the county.
Okay. Uh, I got, uh, Mr. Cleese now.
Uh, some people have already asked about it, but where is the financial impact statement for this ordinance?
It's not there.
I think it was provided back, um, probably about three or four days ago. It may not have made it into the packet, it might be an oversight, but we'll make sure it's in there for others. I also think this is one of those items where it was, with your new ordinance, you now don't have to have it at that time because you have those fifteen days or whatever it is for the, uh, caucus. So we are hearing to the new process that y'all have put in place.
Um, so, yes, yes, yes.
But this one was provided.
Okay, yeah. But who wants to say that? Remember there was a, uh, remember there was a, uh, uh, memorandum that did, uh, that stated? Um, one, I, I have, I have a, a, a bunch of questions. I'll, I'll email them out, but I just wanna, you know, put them, put them out publicly as, uh, our department heads here, and maybe they can answer some of them. How, so we have been dealing with this issue. I know in the whole national area for, for a while, I, I can list twelve properties off, you know, the top of my head that would, would fit this ordinance in terms of blighted properties that we try to be demolished or that we need to, um, you know, we need to, to seize or foreclose on. And so my first question is, I, I, I understand that there, one of the reasons that, for example, we haven't been able to demolish some of the blighted properties, uh, that we currently have is because there's no money in the budget for, for that. And so I'm wondering, um, as we make our budget out for next year, if we could work with our Public Works Department, um, if we're going to be demolishing properties, if we're going to be foreclosing on properties, I'm not sure how much that costs. I'm not sure how much we're anticipating the cost, uh, being, uh, per year, and though that I talked with, uh, I talked with our city attorney about it earlier today, and she was saying that, that sometimes it's between like nine, if you said nine to twelve properties in the city college park, uh, per year, but I, I, I'm sure that we have fifty. We have a list of fifty that we can give in today. And so my first question is, how much would it cost to deal with all those properties? The, uh, the legal costs associated with dealing with the properties as well as the cost to demolish those properties? Um, how much do we have to have in reserve? Because I know that, uh, a lot of this money will be recaptured when we sell the properties. I'm not sure how long the period is, uh, between the time that we foreclose on the property or that we demolish the property and then it gets sold and then it gets rehabbed and we get our money back, so we need to have money in reserves for that.
Yes, you mean, the Canadian one, they're saying?
Yes.
Or plugging is also the fact that the possibility of, of getting, uh, community development block right from, from the federal government. Yeah, that would assist us.
To demolish.
Oh, and demolish.
And then, oh, I understand that there are, there are private companies that actually do rehab after we demolish it, so I would love to see, um, I would love to have a work session where we meet some of those companies that are going to be doing, um, that rehab. And just in, in general, for, uh, baseline, how much is Fulton County currently spending per year on demolition in the, uh, in the SSD? Uh, and, and a legal question is, um, for the, for the backlog that we currently have of blighted properties and demolished houses, what happens after the transition period? Does the clock start over for those people? Does that list automatically transfer to our list? They were already on the list to be demolished by Fulton County? Is Fulton County gonna pay for that, or is the time's up after November and then we have to pay for that? So just how we handle that through the, uh, through the transition period and making sure that we have allocated enough in our budget to handle all of those things. Um, and the, the last piece is in section six, three thousand four, which is page?
One, two twenty-two.
Two twenty-two, uh, I think we currently? Yes, uh, yeah, line two twenty-two, the powers of the city management carrying this out, the city manager, uh, or his or her designated lead will have the authority to do, uh, to, to do this, basically. And I think that this is probably the purview of a building code inspector, and so I'm wondering if we could replace that line, uh, with rebuilding code inspector, understanding that we are not going to have in as much time as it takes to get some of these financial questions answered and fill the budget out to actually do what this ordinance is saying. You could also just hire a building inspector.
Please, if I can, if I can, if I can.
No, that's it. Okay, those are my questions.
Yes, you want my email, little questions?
Absolutely, oh, yeah.
Willis? I think I saw, uh, Ms. Jackson, would you hand it?
So. Um, the anti-white ordinance is that I, that I researched from other cities included the, the percentage that we would collect for anti-white. Is there a reason why this doesn't have it? Can we, can you break that back, um, to include the percentage that we're gonna collect if this, uh, property is deemed to be anti-white? And, um, whatever we are collecting, the tax, uh, commissioner will collect on our property tax, on the property tax, you're correct.
That, that is correct, and, and what I did with this ordinance is I separated the anti-white tax from the nuisance provision because this is more regulatory, um, whereas the anti-white tax should go in your taxation section or go?
Okay, 'cause, uh, on the memorandum we got, it has this ordinance number on it for nuisance. It's saying that's related to the nuisance. The ordinance twenty eighteen oh two eight is the same as the nuisance twenty eighteen oh two eight.
So the anti-white is a completely separate ordinance, so I, I, there's two ordinances, so if it says, I'm, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
It's on the top. That's why I'm confused, 'cause.
This is what he, this is something that the ma- That's what the manager's asking.
Totally separate, yeah.
Okay, so this is a different, okay, so what, what?
So that's my own today's agenda?
Correct. So this is not on today's agenda?
Correct.
That is correct, so I submitted it initially, but I, I forget the reason that we removed it. I think, um, Councilman Ralph, if you remember, because this was your ordinance, I don't remember the reason that we removed it.
So I think the confusion is for that very reason. We're talking of, well, it was three in total, right?
Correct.
And, and so, uh, this memo has to do with something that's not in front of us right now, which is why I couldn't figure out where it should be.
So that you can have this because you submitted the ordinance already? So this is in response to the ordinance that you previously submitted that we didn't give insight on?
Okay, so what, what abused us is it has the ordinance number on it for the nuisance or the. So that's why I was trying to.
I, I put it there because I asked you if this was on the agenda, and you said yes.
My apologies. I apologize. That's a miscommunication because I'm looking at the memo and I don't have it on, on gear. So that's, that's where the confusion is.
When the ordinance goes on the.
Correct, but it is your informational memo to educate you on it because you asked for this information in advance. So that's what this is, apologies.
So again, I would request whatever the new ordinance number on an anti-white, so this being incorporated, we would just add for consideration for the first read, and I think it makes sense that, um, this ordinance, which will be up for a second read, it'd be nice to see it together.
So the, the nuisance ordinance, um, okay, never mind, I'll send my questions, I'll send my, I'll send my emails.
Okay. Next.
Can we do the agreement?
Uh, Mr. Mr., uh, Mr. Donald? Councilmember did, uh, consent about an eight, an agreement we had with the judge, we were supposed to build a, the temp judge.
No, no, I'm sorry. Resolution number twenty eighteen zero four three. No, we voted on the judges, this one is for the temp judge. That's the one you said you didn't get the email from. Didn't get my questions.
Hey, well, you, you still, send your question.
Okay, can I, I've got to say this, because I think that it's important enough to just bring it up, even though we voted. It said in here that, um, the compensation of the pro temp judge has been fixed by the city council pursuant to ordinance twenty eighteen zero twenty-seven. So when you go to twenty eighteen zero twenty-seven, it says in here, there's some additional compensation in here for the judge that's a retainer at, for a thousand hours. And the chief judge, I'm sorry, and, and it also says that the, the temp judge would be paid for first appearance in other, other sessions, but we voted and we don't know how much we're paying.
Okay, let's do, let's do this, uh, Mr. Mr. Donald, uh, we voted on that issue. I would like for you to get the, the council to get your, uh, clue off and see where the issues are.
All right.
And best of luck. Okay, Mr. Brown?
You also have two action items under letter C. The first one is a request approval of the installation of a flashing warning beacon at the intersection of Butleron Road and Stone Lake Drive, Thames Road.
I think the motion approved the flash beacon at Butleron Road and Stone Lake Drive and Thames Road.
You want your second? I said it. Probably moved to second. Any discussion?
Yes. How much and what's the scope of the project?
Mr. Brown, you want to answer that?
Uh, yes, there, there will be no calls to the, the South Fulton, it will be used with, uh, manions, uh, funds, or, or already allocated.
Okay, I'm good.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those are favored? That passes. Okay, that's unanimous. Next, Mr. Brown.
Next item is a request approval of the local government facility making this agreement between the City of South Fulton and the Georgia Department of Transportation for the operation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Roosevelt Highway, US twenty-nine, and Welcome Marrow.
I'm moving to request approval for G I agreement, uh, for Roosevelt Highway and Welcome Marrow.
Second.
Probably moved to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those are favored? They got you next, Mr. Brown. The next item is the city manager's report.
So I think, one, I did want to answer the council member's question and just allow the judge to come up and, uh, and highlight that because I think the, we made the adjustment at the last council meeting, you made an amendment there, and so that is why you fixed the judge's salary, and so that should be included. And then, secondly, the pro temp judge, I believe, what is it, two fifty per session? And so that is, that has already been decided by council, actually prior to the judge's compensation. So you decided on that last week, is that it's the two fifty for first appearance? Got it, yeah.
Yes, so what we did was in that ordinance, if you remember going back to the last week, we amended that ordinance, and that's what we came up with the, the, the new salary. So I, that ordinance that you're looking at may be an older version, but the past version is, doesn't say that.
And, 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 and the?
You, you could obstruct that.
The, the pro temp judge comes out of that increase that you have.
No, what, what, the, the.
So that's, that's based on the hourly, whatever, whatever.
Correct, it's based on the numbers, not hourly, but the session.
The session.
Yes.
Okay. Let's move on. Uh, see advantage, boy.
Very quickly, uh, some areas that we wanted to highlight, uh, as you know, you get the monthly at the, the second meeting, but some key areas that council wanted to be informed on. With the Chestnut Ridge, uh, coordination, uh, there was a, uh, a meeting with the HOA just to receive their concerns. I think that happened on July second, and, uh, we were notified today, oh, got it, we were notified today, uh, that Catholic charities, uh, next week, I'm sorry, this week, will actually be distributing the thirty-four fair cards that we just, not fair cards, I'm sorry, the thirty-four gift cards of five hundred dollar increments this week in support of those who had already registered. Uh, we had a, our initial budget engagement open house, uh, that was well-attended by some of our council mi- members, and we had a quality attendance from, uh, uh, citizens, uh, total of twenty-two citizens, uh, and to date, we've had two hundred, approximately two hundred people, I'm sorry, at the close of that first budget session, approximately two hundred people had already completed a survey, and so we updated after every, uh, budget event. Well-attended, got some really good, uh, feedback, and we were, we are really excited about that. Uh, the great majority of council members have participated in their initial comprehensive plan meeting with staff, uh, and we are on track there. Um, again, June fifth, council received a comprehensive plan. Through the fifteenth, there were some questions that were provided, uh, and now we start the public involvement process that's kind of initiated by council with staff assistance in their areas. Uh, while all of you are very aware of the activities around the mayor's walk, just wanted to highlight the inside of the newsletter, as well as on the website, is the initial report for the, uh, what we found, and, uh, this Friday, the thirty-day follow-up from the Cascade Corridor will be posted, and, uh, I think to date, um, and, and I don't have the exact number of issues, we'll say approximately thirty, identified, twenty-eight, rectified, so we'll have the official report up Friday with, with all of that, that information. Uh, and I believe that would conclude this, this summary report.
Any questions on management? Hearing none. Uh, Madam Attorney, you gave a lot of presentations. Think I said that?
No, Mayor, I, I have nothing to discuss.
Okay, uh, well, we do two minutes each for city council members. Starting when, that's not the last meeting for Mark?
Starting here is the last.
Where? Okay, sorry, you, that's it? Okay, Mark?
I wanted to, uh, give a special thank you to, uh, co-enforcement, Leon Rich, uh, I mean, um, what was it? I'm sorry. Mothers. Uh, and, and it crazy thing is, he was mentioned by name in a, in a B, my apologies, uh, as well as, uh, Sandra from, uh, Public Works, Sandra Johnson, Public Works, she had a community meeting, people were talking about how great a job they do, as well as, uh, you should have a seat, so someone should have given you a flyer for an event coming up, uh, on this Thursday in this very room from six to eight P M. In reference to, um, uh, the community time, uh, I'll be joining with, uh, Mr. Eon Moore from, uh, the DA's office to have, uh, a, a program in reference to game intervention, awareness, and, uh, it's from six to eight, I'm asking anybody to come out, anybody that's available for twelve, I mean, it's July twelve, I'm sorry, uh, and.
I think when you say two minutes, it's making me just throw up.
Forty-three seconds.
Forty-three seconds.
Next, I'll voice Academy Saturday morning, I'll be there in the lobby, and, uh, I'm sure Cleese is gonna give you guys more upon the economic development summit as well for this Saturday, but please encourage any mentors in the community, parents who will have young kids to come out, um, to come out on Thursday. I know a lot of you guys have this extra time because it's gonna be a real big deal, real good update in reference to, uh, how and why our young people join gangs. A child. Uh, a child is now embraced by the village, burning down, feel is warm. So, we need you guys to come out and make sure you get as many young people here as possible today.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um, just want to thank everybody for coming out. And on the fourth Thursday, I don't have the exact date before me, we will be having our District Five zoning meeting. Um, District Five asked for this meeting, so we're gonna come together, um, to do this at Burdette Park. And August third, we will be having our second evening with the councilwoman. Stay tuned, um, for what we'll be doing. Thank you.
Good afternoon, thank you for your engagement and coming out, uh, and for those who are engaged in on social media, thank you. Uh, on July twentieth, um, we would like for all to come out. And, um, we are having a more content in the park where we are, uh, featuring the, um, Black Panther movie. So, we will be serving popcorn, have corner ice and drinks. So, bring your chairs and bring your blankets. Um, we will start sharply at eight, but we ask you to get there at six. So, um, so that you can, uh, you know, get your popcorn and get settled, um, and interact with the community members. Also, we are, I want to thank the mayor and, um, uh, state legislators and the other local legislators, Kimmy Dove, Commissioner Arrington, um, Housewife Elizabeth Derry Jackson. Uh, we are going into Ebury Park Apartments on August first and we are going to give them their annual back-to-school bid. Um, Camp Creek is requiring, um, students to wear a uniform shirt this year. So, we're gonna work hard to make sure that we, um, provide each child a, uh, their initial uniform shirt along with supplies, simple bags. We're taking in the solicitor, not solicitor's office, we're taking in the DA's office, community outreach, um, our own South Fulton Police Department Community Outreach, Fire, Community Outreach, and the shirt office, um, come back today, so they will be joining us. So, we are looking forward to that event. If you have supplies, donations that you would like to, um, contribute, just ring them by City Hall and ask the city, if I'm not there, leave them at the front desk. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ralph?
I want to report to people, councilwoman, Willis stated, but, um, again, we want to encourage people to come out with their families and enjoy, um, the showing of Black Panthers. Also, on July twenty-eighth, on that Saturday, um, we are having an abandoned Sandtown Park in partnership with the South Fulton Chamber, Connect the South Fulton, Touch the Light, Travel Practice. Um, we're gonna have a lot of fun, games for the kids, back-to-school, look bags, you name it. Um, if you'd like to participate or volunteer, I'm still accepting volunteers, but we want to encourage you to come out to that event, it'll be from one to six at Sandtown Park.
Great. It's good.
Thanks everyone for coming out as well. Um, for the rest of this month, the last meeting, um, I talked about the back-to-school that we're gonna have on the twenty-seventh. For the rest of this month, I'm being bombarded by communities that have been turned over, that have serious issues left behind by developers, uh, or developers that are coming in, uh, telling them that they owe money, uh, you know, lots of money and trying to get them to pay, uh, lots of money. And so, for the rest of the month, I'm gonna really be focused on whatever I can do to help them. And I have a meeting with one in the morning that is turning over in a couple of months and they're not ready because, you know, you move into a subdivision, there are a lot of things that you don't know. Nobody tries to educate you, a lot of people just don't know. And having worked in our subdivision for a long time, I just wanted to learn what it was all about. So, I'm gonna really be focused on that for the rest of the month. And then, next month, I, um, I was supposed to have Taste of South Fulton, I'm really looking forward to that and working more with six schools in, in our district in the fall.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kalid?
I just wanted to highlight again, we had a lot of concerns about our budget. We heard a lot of questions about the budget. So, this Thursday, uh, eighth at six P.M., at South West Park Center, we'll be doing our budget workshop. It is awesome. You get to hear from department heads directly about the budget and prioritize and actually sort of build a city budget that you think that you should have. We're gonna use the feedback that we get from these sessions at our seven-hour budget priorities meeting that will be happening this Monday. Uh, you can find information out about the budget and about those meetings at kalidcares.com. As, uh, Mayor Proton Baker said, this Saturday, we'll be doing our Old National Economic Development Summit. Old National is our city's largest commercial corridor. We're going to have city officials from College Park, uh, there as well, talking about the first mile at, uh, two eighty-five, eighty-five, um, what they're doing on their end. Our mayor is going to be there and we're gonna have some developers and panelists to, uh, talk about, uh, the things that are, that are happening there. All of this will also be covered in my first video newsletter, which is coming out this week. And I want to say thank you to everybody who came out tonight. I want to give a special thanks to our mayor for getting us out of here before nine o'clock, by nine o'clock.
South Fulton, brother. Okay, very fast so we can get out of here, we can break you after that. Uh, uh, let me first, I want to thank, I see a man. Uh, he's doing an awesome job. He's spending a lot of time, uh, bringing the things that we, that we need for this city. So, I want to personally say thank you for all that you do. I also want to remind each and every one of you here that you need to go vote. Please go vote. We need to make a difference. Uh, you know, the vote, you don't count, so please go vote. I came to the meeting earlier today so I could get my foot, my bag. The other two things is, uh, on the back of what Mr. Kalid was saying, please, y'all, come to your budget here. Come to the land use plan here. Because that's what happens, if you don't come and put your input on, then you're governed by whoever was there. So, I urge each and every one of you, when the notices come to do, do budget hearings and land use plan hearings, please set aside all you're doing and make those meetings, okay? Uh, Mr. Kalid, ten minutes tonight, I accept the motion to, okay? I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I'll remove the second. All the favors? No discussion?